I'd like to call the April 23, 2025 Regular Board Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Board to Order. May I have a roll call?
Rego here. Goodrich?
Yes.
Kate?
Here.
Kovak? Lewis?
Here.
Rezinski?
Here.
Figueroa?
Here.
We have a call. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sam, please read our Fenton Mission, Beliefs, and Bison Way Statements.
Fenton Mission Statement: Cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Fenton Belief Statement: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engage learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Our next item is Recognitions. Kate?
All right. Good evening, everyone. As you all know, Fenton is truly an amazing school where any of our students can accomplish amazing things. Tonight is going to be proof of that. We have so many success stories to cover, so try to keep up. We're going to start with Group Interpretation. So if the students and coaches could come on up. Okay, so not all the students could be with us, but I'm going to read all their names. So we have John Aguilar, the student. Analia Artiaga, Aldo Benitez, Sebastian Botello, Emmanuel Flores, Juliana Garcia, Arturo Hurtado Jr., Brisa Lopez, Gregory Platak, Angelina Vargisi, Javier Canones, Alonzo Romero, and Alida Thatch, and Jason Vargas. So that's our group interpretation. So let me tell you a little bit about them. Congratulations to this group for their third-place finish at the state tournament. Their history-making performance of Ride the Cyclone earned them Fenton's best finish in this event since 1979. The state finish comes on the heels of a sectional championship and a conference championship. Some of you might be asking, what is group interpretation? It's a 30-minute play that focuses on storytelling without the use of character-defining costumes, makeup, props, or lighting, or any of the other trappings of traditional theater. So students rely solely on their voices, bodies, and musical instruments to bring the story to life. These students worked tirelessly to compete strongly against the very best in Illinois, and it was a wild ride on the cyclone, one that will not be forgotten. Finally, I'd like to mention that all state cast honors were awarded to the following Fenton G.I. members. So Arturo, Analia, Alida, Aldo, Greg, Angelina, Manny, Javier, and Sebastian. I'm going to turn it over to our incredible coaches, Nicole Hendrick and Melissa Feinberg.
Hello. Hello.
Really got in there.
Thank you so much for being with us or inviting us in tonight to celebrate their achievement. We have had just an absolutely wonderful time directing these kids. In just a short 15 rehearsals, we were able to put this together after they built up their perseverance through the speech team, and then the speech season, rather, and then coming together to share this story with everyone onstage. It was an absolute joy to see the joy that they brought to the audiences at each level of competition.
We're going to introduce, oh my gosh, I'm like in the mic. We're going to introduce two of our students to just say a couple words about their experience. We'll have Aldo Benitez, who's a four-year member of Group and Terp, and Arturo Hurtado Jr., who's a three-year member of Group and Terp, who's come up and share a little something.
So we'll take these off.
And thank you so much. Thank you so much to the board members who are retiring from their post this evening. We've been really fortunate to stand in front of you and accept some of these congratulations from you over the years, and thank you for everything you've brought over the course of your time on the board. And to the new board members, hopefully look forward to standing in front of you for many seasons to come. Thank you.
Hello. Okay. I'm Arturo Hurtado Jr. I've been a part of G.I. for three years now, and first, I would like to thank my family. They've been putting up with my busy schedule for three years now. It's not fun for them, but I would like to thank them and all the families who are part of G.I. Next, to my directors, they always put up with us, and they always try our best to get us as far as they can, and I think that was proven here. And I would just like to thank everyone who's a part of G.I. We all put so much work into it, and every moment of it is so much fun together, and I'm very excited for next year.
Hello. I'm Aldo Benitez, senior and four-year member of not only speech but also group interpretation. Oh my God, this year was something. First and foremost, thanking the amazing directors, Melissa Feinberg and Nicole Hendricks. None of this would have been remotely possible without either of you two and Mr. Torres, who helped out assisting our two head directors with blocking and getting into character for many of us. Doing this for four years, I have seen so many people do it for one year, do it for two, three years, but I could not be more proud of this amazing cast behind me and the amount of effort and talents they all have. None of this would have been possible without any of them, and I'm proud to say that I'm not only Aldo Benitez's four-year member, but I'm Aldo Chad Benitez's four-year member.
Do you want the members to come up here? Do you want us all to go over there? It might be easier to come.
Let's throw it down.
Okay. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to contest play. So if we could have members of the contest play. And directed by Dr. Mike Mitchell and assisted by Ms. Amanda Baker. They could come to the front. Okay. The students who were involved were Alida Aguilar, Natalia Alvarado, Leslie Amzueta, Alex Caballo Rivas, Emmanuel Kano, Haley Cruz, Lucy Johnson, Max Kolodjacek, Lex McColsky, Julia Mikael Ovozka, Javion Pittman, Perot Thatch, Nicole Torres, Faith Wersiona, and Amir Yabikola. This year's show, The Miraculous Journey of Edward Tulane, was a state qualifier for their acting, but later, the whole crew won the state championship for drama technical performance. So what the crew does is they build and manage the set and props used in the performance as well as managing the audio, visual, and lighting. Their actions are timed and measured just as rigorously as the performance is onstage. Fenton previously won state championships for drama technical performance in 2023 for their production of Sylvia, and in 2015 for their production of The Pearl by John Steinbeck. The acting in this year's performance placed seventh overall. All state cast members' honors were awarded to the following students: Alida, Lex, Faith, and Amir. I'll pass the mic over now to Dr. Mitchell.
I'm going to be super quick. I want to, first off, thank you for inviting us here tonight and that kind of thing. This activity is, it's an amazing activity, and they call it competition, but quite honestly, when all the schools get together, they're incredibly supportive of everybody. And to take home this plaque for the third time now in the last 10 years is pretty remarkable, and I think quite a testament to the work that these students do and that kind of thing. So I couldn't be more proud of them. I told them a number of times, they're probably sick of me telling them how proud I am of them, but I'll say it one more time, I'm really, really proud of you guys for doing this. I would like to, because we have some seniors that would like to say a few things, I think we have three of them, just to tell you a little bit about their experience with contest drama and that kind of thing. And again, I want to thank you so much for your support for this activity. It's an incredible activity and one that's vital to education and the arts and that kind of thing. So thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Emmanuel Kano, and I just want to say I had a blast doing this, man. It was like really fun. At times, it could be chaotic and stressful since it was my first year, even though I was a senior doing it, but you know, it was really fun acting and sort of connecting with my cast onstage and also the crew who supported us throughout the whole way. I just want to say how proud I am of them, and it was really fun watching what we could put on onstage and what other schools could too. And you know, Dr. Mitchell, I'm never tired of you saying you're proud of us, you know? I like compliments. Thank you.
As you know, I like acting and contest drama, and I think I've made like 20 or so or more speeches about Dr. Mitchell and his greatness and his boldness. But God, I love it so much. He has made acting at Fenton and theater in general such a safe and amazing place, and consistently for the past three years, contest drama has been the light at the end of every single day that I get to look forward to. Just every day when I have a stressful or hard time and I can't get all the bad thoughts out of my head, I go to contest drama, and it's just all gone because I have an amazing director, an amazing family, and these are my family because they're just such great people, and I couldn't think of a better group to spend my time with. And that's what contest drama is about. It's a competition, yes, but the more important part, the friends you make along the way. So I'm really thankful for contest drama, for Dr. Mitchell, and for my friends.
Oh, wait, do we have their names? Is that like important? Okay, whatever. Hi, I'm Alida. I'm a senior. I've been doing this for four years, and honestly, at first, I wasn't thinking of joining this because like I had done a play, one play. I was going to do a musical eighth grade, and then COVID happened, and it was not going to happen ever in my life. So I just, I just decided that I was going to do one play, and that was it. And then this amazing group of senior girls had asked me if I had wanted to join this contest drama, join the show, and I decided to take a leap. I decided to continue doing this for four years because every group, it's a new family. It's, people come in and out, and people do different things. You get different levels of wisdom. Like every senior, there is, there is a new bit of wisdom that they give you or a new bit of support. I've had so much support from my seniors, and I hope I was able to give that to some of my underclassmen friends. I want to thank them for all their hard work and our directors for being so amazing. It's been a difficult year for me personally, so the fact that I've gotten to have this family to come back to and this familiar, familiarity has meant a lot to me. We do a lot here. We work really hard. We memorize our lines, sure, but it's about the connection. So every, every time we perform on a stage, it's not only about, you know, competing and trying to get an award and trying to do something, it's about what we learn. I learned confidence. I learned that you can do anything as long as there's someone with, you can do it alone, yeah, but it helps to have someone with you. I learned that there are always going to be people supporting me and pushing me to do better things, and that meant a lot. Thank you.
It would be, it would be a mistake not to mention that Ms. Baker's a big part of this. She's directing Charlie Brown, the musical, and you can see a couple of our students up here with the T-shirts and that kind of thing, and that's where some of our other students are right now. They're wrapping things up with their final rehearsal. So again, thank you very much. That's it for us.
All right. Now we're on to girls wrestling. So I'd like to call up Yanelle Perez, Ariana Sowadeo, and Coach Brian Hastings. We're also going to, I was going to, he's more than welcome to come up. He's next, but yes, come on up, Thomas. All right. Girls wrestling has only been an official IHSA sport for a few years, but in that time, our Fenton program continues to grow and solidify itself as one of the best around. Yanelle is a senior and was 27-4 this year on her way to qualifying for the IHSA state finals for the second time. Ariana is a sophomore and was 31-7 this year. She went to state last year as an alternate, but this year, she worked hard and earned her own spot in the state finals. Both of these student athletes are two-time Upstate Eight Conference Champions in their weight classes, and they're trailblazer for many future girl wrestlers. With that, I'll turn it over to Coach Hastings.
Thanks so much for all of your support from the board, from the administration. I'd like to especially thank the athletes. You know, we feel like wrestling is the hardest thing that they can do in high school mentally and physically. They push themselves on a physical, mental basis, or every single day, they challenge themselves. You know, it's pretty, it's amazing. It's impressive. Yanelle's been an incredible leader, great leader by example, great positive leader. Yanelle's really grown into her own as a sophomore. She's a great leader. You know, she's the future. And should I talk about Thomas now or wait for him? Okay. All right. And then I'll wait for Thomas, but we're so proud of both of them. Both of them won a matchdown state, finishing in the final 12 of their weight classes, and both, you know, resumes are very impressive, so we're super proud of their accomplishments. So thank you for all of your hard work, guys.
Okay. And now on to Thomas. So Thomas Claus, Fenton's boys wrestling program has a long and storied history. It's well-known that it's a competition just to get into our highly competitive, highest wrestling tournament every year. Thomas is a senior, and he had a second consecutive standout season to close the Fenton, to continue the Fenton legacy. Thomas was 32-4 this season with 26 pins. He won the Upstate Eight Conference Championship for his weight class, and later, the regional championship on his way to the IHSA state finals for the second time. Again, Coach Hastings.
And just like, you know, in Ariana, Thomas's resume is in And just like Yanelle and Ariana, Thomas's resume is incredible. So two-time state qualifier, sectional champion, two-time regional champion, conference champion. Both him and Ariana both started as freshmen, I'm sorry, Ariana, Yanelle, and Thomas all started as freshmen. So Yanelle and Thomas as seniors, to accomplish that without the experience that they're, you know, most people that they're wrestling against have is very impressive. Thomas's work ethic is incredible. He doesn't speak too much, minus with his right fist sometimes, you know, he's, he's very competitive. He's, we have some nicknames for him, sectional champ, freight train, twinkle toes, but he's, he's amazing. He's as tough as they come, especially for big guys. He works his butt off, he's super competitive, so it's pretty awesome to watch him and he just always, you know, fights and his hard work is exemplary. So super proud of Thomas and all of his accomplishments.
Okay, and finally, a very special recognition at the end here. I'd like to introduce Dr. Kelly Torres and Mr. Luis Garcia. Dr. Torres and Mr. Garcia were named as finalists for the 2025 Golden Apple Award for Excellence in Teaching. The Golden Apple Foundation recognizes exemplary educators, supports young teachers through mentorship programs, and works to recruit future teachers through a scholars program that's open to high school and college students. This year, only 30 finalists were selected from 470 nominations throughout Illinois. Of the 30 finalists, just 10 were from the suburbs. These are two outstanding educators and we're very excited for them to be recognized in such a way. I'll start with Dr. Torres. Dr. Torres is a social studies teacher who joined Fenton in 2013 and she earned her doctorate just this year, so we're super proud of that. Yep, let's give her a hand for that. Kelly was involved in advising the criminal justice course to be fully project-based, which was included, which included visits from the FBI, congressional officials, and a man named Larry Lawton, who is a notorious jewelry thief that is now the only convict to be an honorary police officer and to testify before Congress. So we got to meet him, which was awesome. Additionally, Kelly has helped revise our Bison Orange program, a course that supports struggling students. So Kelly has done so much in so many areas. She also was a head girls volleyball coach for 10 years and participated as a head coach in boys volleyball, so you know, she's done it all. A little bit about Luis. Mr. Garcia is a business education teacher who joined Fenton in 2021. He's a vital member of our incubator team, which we've heard a lot about this year. For those of you who don't know, incubator is a hands-on, real-world entrepreneurship experience that allows our students to conceptualize and fully develop their own products and services, all while being guided by real-world entrepreneurs and business professionals. This is our first year with incubator and Luis has gone above and beyond to develop the program, recruit mentors from the community, collect dress clothes for students to wear, and secure donations for students to win during the various Shark Tank events throughout the year. Throughout all of his classes, Mr. Garcia inspires his students with real-life experience and adapts his lessons when needed. Earlier this year, Mr. Garcia was recognized by Deos and the College of DuPage as Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year. So both of these teachers are so accomplished. We're so fortunate to have both of them. We don't know the results yet. Golden Apple will select the winning teacher sometime this spring, so we're all keeping our fingers crossed and ears open, hoping that we're going to hear one of these two names. But regardless, we are so, or both, right, at top, right? Regardless, we are so proud of both of them. So if either of you would like to say anything, I'll turn the mic to you.
Good evening. As mentioned, Mr. Garcia, and just a few quick words of appreciation. I know all of us have heard the phrase, "It takes a village to raise a child." But I believe, strongly believe, it takes also a village to raise wonderful teachers. So first of all, I would like to thank all of our community for the tremendous support since I joined Fenton in 2021. You guys have really just kept me warm and supported all my crazy projects and also my students. Without them, I wouldn't be the teacher that I am today. So I want to thank community members and my students. Can we give them a round of applause, please? Last but not least, I'd like to thank all of our board members and again, I would like there's a special person in the crowd today, which is my wife. And, you know, having to deal with Mr. Garcia's crazy schedule is not easy, but she's like, "When is your incubator event?" "Oh, it's May 8th, May 8th incubator." And she's like, "I'll be there." So thank you for your support and my family watching at home, thank you for everything. So thank you all.
All right, so I wrote a speech because I'm not as good on the fly as everybody else seems to be up here at home, so I'm just going to read this. "Good evening, I'm Dr. Kelly Torres and for the past 13 years, Fenton has been more than just my workplace, it's been my mission, my purpose, and my privilege. Currently, I teach AP US History, I serve as the attendance interventionist, and today I stand before you as a finalist for the Golden Apple. To the new board members, some of which are former students, welcome. You, you have an opportunity here, your leadership marks a new chapter for our district and with that comes an exciting opportunity to shape the future of our students and our school community. I'm optimistic about the direction we can move in together and I'm eager to work alongside you to create meaningful progress. I want to thank you guys so much for the opportunity here tonight and for recognizing me as a Golden Apple finalist. This recognition means a great deal, not just to me, but to everyone who helped to make it possible. I want to especially thank the students, families, and colleagues who shared their voices during the interview process, as well as Board Member John Rozinsky and former Board President Kit Ting Palpong for speaking on my behalf. The support of everyone involved in the interview process is truly appreciated. This award reflects not only my work in the classroom, but also the collective efforts of many across our school community. I have been fortunate to work alongside dedicated professionals, bringing guest speakers to enhance learning and build meaningful relationships with both students and their families. I'm also grateful to the board and the administration for allowing the kind of flexibility that lets me do what I do best, which is teach with creativity, care, and relevance. That flexibility has been essential to the work I'm most proud of. We do continue, however, to face significant challenges as a school district, and I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to acknowledge that. If we would like to see more Golden Apple teachers recognized for awards like this in the future, we have to ensure that we have the conditions in place to make sure great teaching can thrive. There are barriers that make it difficult for many to do their best work. We need a culture that actively strives for excellence, where collaboration is supported, communication is open, transparency is valued, and trust is built across all levels. When we commit to that kind of environment, we open the door for more teachers and more students to grow and succeed in meaningful ways. This work isn't easy, but if you're ever wondering what's happening in our classrooms, what's driving success, and what obstacles we're facing, I invite you to come to our rooms and find out. Knock on my door, I'm happy to talk. We have the power to create a culture where excellence is expected, where every teacher has the opportunity to do their best work, and every student receives the support they need to succeed. I'm deeply honored to be recognized this way and I look forward to continuing our efforts to help Fenton reach its fullest potential. Thank you again for this incredible honor." All right, the word will come up.
Karen, do we have any public comments tonight?
There are no public comments.
Our next item is consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Rozinsky?
Yes.
Goodrich?
I'm saying.
Luis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn, sign, die? In other words, we are closing out this portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Rozinsky?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Luis?
Yes, motion passed. Our next item is recognition of our outgoing board members. Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. So we want to recognize three board members tonight that this is their last night with us here tonight. I'd like to start with Juliette Regal, who is in her eighth year. A round of applause for Juliette. It's hard to say goodbye, Juliette. You were a board vice president. You had kids that went through Fenton, that have since graduated, you continued on. I value you as far as the advice that you would give. You always had sound reasoning behind what you thought and were very accessible and I think were a tremendous asset to this board for many years, so you're definitely going to be missed. So thank you, Juliette, for all that you've done here. Another round of applause.
Thank you.
Okay, Sylvia. Sylvia's been with us for four years, also had students come through Fenton. I'd like to say thank you to you. One thing, particular note, is that you have such a big heart and you care so much. And I think you brought that to the board with your questioning and your decision-making and I could always count on you that you were going to have the students' interests at heart and you would vocalize that. And so you are also going to be greatly missed, but we appreciate your years on the board. Also Sylvia, thank you.
Thank you.
And of course Kent Kovak, unfortunately could not be here tonight, but he was a true Renaissance man. It's not like he's dead, he's just not here. He couldn't get a flight here, so let me clarify. But Kent was a true Renaissance man. He knew a lot about a lot of things, very intelligent, very tech savvy, loved policies. So I think we're going to miss him in the Policy Committee, right, Jose? Yeah, because he extremely thorough. But you know, Kent had a good heart also. He, he had a daughter recently, probably like one or two now, but you know, he was obviously thinking down the line, thinking about the future, but you know, he didn't run and, but we really appreciate his efforts, so we could give him a round of applause also. And soon here, we're going to welcome the new board and we're going to have a short intermission and, yep, there it is. So brief intermission, so if you're watching at home, hang in there, there's no technical difficulties, but we basically need to transition from the old board to the new board, so old board, old board members, please bring your stuff with you at some point before we move on to the new board. But we have some cake there in the back and we'd like to celebrate your accomplishments here for a little while, so thank you.
Thank you. I resent being called old.
It is absolutely not a once-a-month meeting, like someone told me it was going to be. But it was an honor, even the good, bad, and the ugly. And I have enjoyed it so much and I want to say to the new board members that are coming on and the ones that are remaining, to keep the children focused, make that your priority. Not your personal agendas, not your thoughts of what, but what's best for the students, the school, the community. And you have to keep all of that focus, your focus, keep that your focus. And lastly, I pray that we do keep the DEI committee, though we have not had to use it for our board, the DEI Board Committee. Thank God we've not had to use it, but let's keep it on and going. I know Leo is one of the board members, so for that. But that's it. And I thank you and I thank the community for allowing me to be a board member for four years. It's been great. The pay hasn't been great.
I also wanted to just say it's been such a great honor for me to be on the board for the past eight years. Honestly, I can't think of a greater thing to do to volunteer your time than for the youth of the community. So thank you all. So thank you all.
Thank you for standing over. Right president. Help me get my seat up. President, you are a great actor.
It is absolutely not a once-a-month meeting, like someone told me it was gonna be. But it was an honor, even the good, bad, and the ugly. And I have enjoyed it so much. And I want to say to the new board members that are coming on and the ones that are remaining, to keep the children focused, make that your priority. Not your personal agendas, not your thoughts of what's best for the students, the school, the community. And you have to keep all of that focus, your focus, keep that your focus. And lastly, I pray that we do keep the DEI Committee, though we have not had to use it for our board, the DEI Board Committee. Thank God we've not had to use it, but let's keep it on and going. I know Leo is one of the board members, so for that. But that's it. And I thank you and I thank the community for allowing me to be board member for four years. It's been great. The pay hasn't been great. But yeah. Thank you. I also wanted to just say it's been such a great honor for me to be on the board for the past eight years. Honestly, I can't think of a greater thing to do to volunteer your time than for the youth of the community. So thank you all.
Where's this one?
Yes, Christopher.
May I have a motion and a second to nominate Leo Figueroa as president pro temp?
I'll make the motion.
Certainly. Roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Yes?
Yes.
Matou?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Macalo?
Yes.
Rosinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Motion passed.
Good evening. I would like to call the April 23, 2025 regular board meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 back to order. May I have a roll call in a quorum, please?
Miller?
Yes.
Matou?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Macalo?
Yeah.
Rosinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
We had a quorum. Acknowledged received the certified election results. The official candidates and abstract of votes cast of the 2025 consolidated school board elections, held in April 1, 2025 and certified by DuPage County Clerk, has been received and accepted by Fenton Community High School District 100. The final winning results is a list in order to the highest to the lowest vote received to fill our board positions are... Sorry, I mispronounced your last name. Rachel Matou elected for a four-year term ending in 2029, 1728 votes received. Michael Miller elected to a four-year term ending in 2029, 1628 votes received. Dr. Christopher Macalo elected for a four-year term ending in 2029, 1584 votes received. Due to the lack of candidates for the elections, John Rosinski is going to continue serving on the board under what's known as holdover provision under Illinois law. A current seat of school board member term or office does not end until a qualified successor has been appointed or elected. This election only had three candidates run for the four possible seats in the board, therefore, Mr. Rosinski's term will continue. Next item. To all board new elected officers, board members, and Mr. Rosinski, please stand up. Let us all read the order of office together. A copy has been provided in your desk.
When do we start?
All right. Go ahead. Ready?
Yep.
Yes. Hi, John Rosinski. Do you solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Fenton Community High School District 100 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability? I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinions by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of the students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by the majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility of my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Fenton Community High School District 100. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound and organized framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. I shall serve as education key advocate on behalf of the students and our community's schools to advance the vision of Fenton Community High School District 100. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district's work fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Thank you very much and welcome. Our next item is the board nominations. Election of board president. Would anyone like to nominate a board president?
I'd like to nominate Carrie Lewis as the board president.
Are any other nominations for the board president?
Yeah, I'll nominate myself.
Okay. All in favor of Carrie Lewis for the office board president, raise your hand.
Four. So it takes.
Five. One, two, three, four, five.
I see five.
Five.
All in favor of...
Doesn't matter. You get five on the other one.
Okay. Karen, please record. Five votes for Carrie Lewis.
Actually, no.
Okay, we continue with our board of elections.
Now that there's a president, really Carrie should take over.
Okay.
Our next item is election of board vice president. Would anyone like to nominate a board vice president?
I'll nominate Leo.
Are there any other nominations for board vice president?
I'd like to nominate Reed Goodrich.
All in favor of Leo Figueroa for the office of board vice president, raise their hands.
One, two, three, four.
I see four votes.
Four votes.
All in favor of Reed Goodrich for the office of board vice president, please raise your hand.
I see three votes.
Leo Figueroa received the majority of the votes and is now the board vice president. Our next office is board secretary. Would anyone like to nominate a board secretary?
Jan Rosinski?
Are there any other nominations for board secretary? All in favor of John Rosinski for the office of board secretary, raise your hand.
I see five votes.
John Rosinski received the majority of the votes and is now the board secretary. Before proceeding on, we want to...
They can stay. They can stay.
Okay, it's fine. Our next item is board committee appointments. Current committee members have the right to retain their positions. At this time, the following committee seats are available. Bensonville Community Foundation, two positions.
One.
I'm sorry, one position. Board Finance and Facilities, no positions available. Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate, that would be the president, so I would fill that seat. Board Policy Committee, two positions available. Land or Legislative Education Network of DuPage County, one position. NETSEC, North DuPage Special Education Cooperative, one position and one alternate position available. I guess we visited. John, you're on the Bensonville Foundation, Community Foundation, and also... I guess we visited John, you're on the Bensonville Foundation, Community Foundation, and also co-chair for the Board Finance Facility Meeting with myself. So one, another position is available for the Bensonville Community Foundation.
Does anyone interest?
For the, for the, for the new board members, could someone, John, could you just give us a description of?
Basically, basically receives donations and there's people from all the boards that are present, and then we help route those funds to organizations upon request. Majority of our money comes from the Subaru Foundation, I don't know if you were aware of that. So, yeah, so we receive a check from the Subaru Foundation, we receive other donations, they do some fundraising. We meet every other month, it's almost always the meeting after our board meeting, so you'll have a Wednesday, Thursday meeting every other month. This month, they did move it because of Fenton's graduation, knowing that the two Fenton board members could not attend. Whoever sits on board, I can get you that date, we'll forward that information at a foundation. You'll occasionally get a periodic email for small mini grants that can be approved by vote, by email, and other times, it's got to be an in-person vote with a quorum. So every other month, it's a meeting. They normally go around 45 minutes, the longest has been two and a half hours, which was our first one after I was told it would only be a 30-minute meeting. But we got through it, it worked out, it was a big meeting, we had a lot to cover. So that's, that's the foundation in a nutshell. It's not difficult. It's, it's good, we're giving back to the community. We've received several foundation grants from them here into Fenton, and we've distributed other funds throughout the community. Kent Kovak used to sit with me on the committee, so. That's a quick summary of the Bensonville Community Foundation. So, anybody interested? I saw Mike raised his hand. That's good. I mean, I forgot how this part goes.
Well, yeah, we're, we're just seeing who's interested and then talk through it and see if that works. So Mike's interested, anyone else?
I'm staying with one.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so Mike. Take a motion. You want to do that now or do it after?
I do.
Do it as we go along? Okay. May I have a motion and a second to appoint Mike Miller to the vacant seat on the Bensonville Community Foundation Board?
I'll make the motion.
He make the motion. I'll second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Rodzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
I'm staying.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion and a second to appoint myself, Carrie Lewis, and John Rosinski to the vacant seat on the Finance Facility Committee Board?
Vacant seat?
Is a right to retain.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Rodzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
I'm staying.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion and a second to appoint myself, Carrie Lewis, to the vacant seat on the Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate Board?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Rodzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
I'm staying.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. You want to spread LIND a little bit? Yeah. So LIND, Legislative Education Network of DuPage County is basically a group that's very in touch with what's going on, is sort of state of the Illinois legislation. So there's periodic meetings that I attend and one board member occasionally when they have them, and they basically give updates on legislation, potential, positions to be aware of, and so that's, that's the type of group that that is, just trying to keep track of what's going on with the state, so that Juliet was on that before, so that that, there's no one on that, so looking for someone who might be interested.
I'll take that one.
Rachel's interested, okay. That sound good? May I have a motion and a second to appoint Rachel Matu to the vacant seat on the Legislative Education Network of DuPage County Board?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Rodzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
I'm staying.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. All right, Policy Committee. So basically, periodically, we get updates from press on updating policies that we review, and basically, we're looking for two members to be on that committee, and that's pretty much it. You know, we may occasionally introduce new potential policies that maybe doesn't come through that process. In fact, we'll probably have a policy meeting next month, just updating some policies that with every five years, you should update a policy, that we have a few that, that we should update for that reason, so. Anyone interested in that?
I volunteer to serve on the Policy Committee.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, I know, we have, yeah, that's, that's one, so we have Dr. McCullough, anyone else?
I will.
Leo? Okay. May I have a motion and a second to appoint Christopher McCollum and Leo Figueroa to the vacancies on the Policy Committee Board?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Rodzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Next, we have one position and, oh, and one alternate for North DuPage Special Education Cooperative.
I'll volunteer.
May I have a motion and a second to appoint Rachel Matu to the vacant seat on the North DuPage Special Education Cooperative NETSEC Board?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Rodzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich? Goodrich?
I'm staying.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. The last committee we have for is the DEI positions. Oh, yeah, I mean, this committee was formed a few years back, and actually, outgoing board member Sylvia Hay kind of explained it was created as a board committee, sort of as needed. It really has not convened and had meetings in the past, in the past, at least the recent past, but it was created, I suppose, in case there was, felt like there was a need to, to meet, so it is an existing board committee, and right now, there's two positions available. It doesn't meet, it's on the ask need, I'd be, I'd put my stuff out there. Okay, all right.
Okay, I'll stay.
Okay. May I have a motion and a second to appoint myself, Carrie Lewis, and Leo Figueroa to the vacant seats on the DEI Committee Board?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Rodzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Stay.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. Our next item is informational, information item, Sam? Okay, so now we're going to move on to the part of the meeting that we call informational items, so basically, this is just for you to be aware of, not necessarily action taken on this, although there could be action taken at, at future board meetings. So we're going to start out with textbook purchases, so I think Steph's going to walk us through this.
Hello, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Stephanie Jackson, I'm the Director of Learning, and for the rest of you, good evening. So, to begin with, we have a few renewals, so these are textbooks that we're currently using, and I'm going to go through those more quickly. If you have questions, please feel free to stop and ask. The first is our World Language Department uses this textbook for both French 1, 2, and 3, and Spanish 1, 2, and 3. These are digital licenses only for the Chromebooks for the students. They have been using this for six years, they're requesting a renewal on these licenses, and it'll be paid over the course of three years, so beginning this year, and then two more installments over the next two years. So that is this particular textbook. This next one is for our Introduction to Social Studies class, which is a class that every freshman takes at Fenton. They use desk atlases in that course, they have class sets that remain in the classroom. The last set that they purchased is a 2009 edition, and they need to be refreshed. They have found an edition that they like, and basically, it's a class set for every classroom, and this particular edition also comes with digital licenses for students to have access via their Chromebook. So that is this particular textbook. Okay, this is a new textbook for our AP Government and Politics class in the Social Studies Department. This is a change from the current textbook, which is a workbook that students get and they keep it, and they carry it to class and home for homework every day. This would be a change in format, so there would be a class set of textbooks that would remain in the classroom, and then there would be a set of digital licenses for use through the Chromebook. This is a college board-approved text for this particular AP course, and there, I have a list of other schools in DuPage County that are also using this book, so that would be the recommendation for this particular course and textbook. Oops, wrong way. Okay, and then the final one is the largest, it affects the largest number of students at Fenton, it is for our English curriculum. This particular text is all digital, it will affect our English 1, 2, 3, and 4 class, our EL 3 and 4 classes, and our English 9, 10, 11, and 12 classes, which are our special education courses. So, basically, our newcomer EL classes would not be using this, and then our AP juniors and seniors would not be using this, but every other student at Fenton High School would be using this curriculum. Some of the highlights, we spent first semester looking at different English curriculums, and this was the one that we settled upon. Something notable about this, District 2 did decide last month, their board approved this for K through 8 in their district, so that would provide some continuity, which we're pretty interested in. The last time English purchased curriculum was in 2007, and the English teachers feel like this is going to provide a pretty good opportunity to strengthen reading for students in the district. Our current curriculum is largely teacher-created units and lessons, so this is going to provide alignment of skills and text complexity, and there will be a lot more reading support with this particular program. Teachers will be able to make more data-informed decisions for instruction, set more reading goals, track and monitor progress that students are making. This particular purchase is also going to include other programs that we purchase separately, including turnitin.com, Writable, Read 180. It is also aligned with EL standards, it includes a grammar program, it is aligned with map reading testing, and it includes ACT prep materials, it syncs with Google Classroom, there's differentiation, students can have audio text read to them through this program. So this is also kind of like the World Language, where the purchase would be over the course of two years, and it's a three-year license for this one. So the pricing for English and for the social studies texts, so these were the adoptions, is included here, and the asterisk next to the English is because that's over a two-year period, so that's for this fiscal year, and then it'll be the same price next year. And then these are for World Language, Social Studies, and Math.
So before we move on to that, is there any questions from the board? We would anticipate then having this as an action item at the next board meeting.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
I appreciate that you shared the information about alignment, because looking at images of books doesn't tell me anything.
Sure.
Who was it that made the recommendations to bring this forward?
English teacher worked piloting the programs after doing research. We looked at McGraw-Hill, we looked at a bunch of other programs, the teacher spent a lot of time working through them.
Okay, so the, the teachers of the individual departments made a recommendation, submitted it to you, and that's how we got to this?
Yeah, I've been pretty highly involved in the process as well.
Okay, but it was teacher-driven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then, my next question, Turn It In. You know, my knowledge of that is that it reports a lot of false positives with regard to AI. Is that something you all are seeing, and are you finding that it's worth the investment? Are there other tools that might be better?
We don't currently invest in turnitin.com right now. Teachers are much more likely to be having conversations with students, so I agree with you, I think that most of the time, those AI detectors are pretty faulty.
Is there a, I'm assuming that Fenton would have to pay a subscription service to access it, a subscription fee?
No.
No?
This, well, on its own, yes. If you want to turnin.com, it costs money on the side, but this is just bundled into it, so it's a tool that's accessible through this HMH curriculum.
Okay, I, I think it is important, though, to consider the data related to false positives of usage of AI, so that students aren't penalized for something that maybe they didn't do.
Sure, yeah, and we do, we have a lot of conversations with them, and I think understanding what your kids are, what their writing is like, having conferences, being able to say, like, hey, we went through this whole writing process, like, we had, we talked during the outlining phase, we talked during the brainstorming phase, now all of a sudden, you know, so our teachers are constantly monitoring the writing process, so we haven't really used any AI detection software over the last couple of years.
The reason I bring that up is because I am aware of institutions that have chosen and purposely encouraged teachers not to use Turn It In because of the false positives, so that's my concern.
Sure.
Regarding the AP Gov book, are they currently using a physical textbook?
Regarding the AP Gov book, are they currently using a physical textbook in AP Gov?
They have a, it's a, like a consumable, so it's a workbook, the kids get it, they can write inside of it, and then they keep it.
Is there a digital version of this?
Okay.
Okay.
That's part of the reason for the new one?
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep going with the summer curriculum.
Okay. So then this also would be an item for next month, but this is informational at this point. So, a little bit of background on this, teachers apply for summer hours, and then we go through them, we approve them based on building and district priorities. So, for curriculum hours, teachers would be granted curriculum hours based on if they are a new teacher of a new course, so they're teaching something for the first time, if they are teaching a course that has never been done before. So if there was a new course that was approved to be taught next year, they would be working on developing it, if there is a new textbook involved in a course, or if there's a major course revision being done. So those are the reasons you would be granted curriculum hours. Last summer, there were 1,800 curriculum hours requested, and we are sticking with that same number for this summer. So that's, and I'll know, we'll have the exact number of hours at next month's board meeting. And then for workshop hours, that is compensation for any summer meetings or training that teachers do during summertime. Last summer, there were 124, or 125 hours requested. This summer, I'm projecting more, and the reason for that is that we know we are having math teachers coming in to do training on CPM curriculum, and then we're also going to have some English teachers doing training on the HMH curriculum if that's approved, and...
I'm sorry, could you help me out with that, or no?
Sorry. CPM is our math curriculum, so they'll be coming in to do the math curriculum training. And then the HMH is what I just went over about the English, so that's Houghton, Mifflin, Harcourt, which is the name of the publisher, I apologize. So the English teachers would be doing the English training for curriculum. So that's the reason why we have whole departments coming in to do curriculum training.
Okay.
Yeah.
I need to get up to speed on the CBA, I'm assuming these rates of pay are defined in the CBA?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, now we have informational items, so wanted to bring forward here to the new board that we will be having the superintendent search for the year '26, '27. So this is sort of an opening discussion to get feedback, thoughts, again, no action there's at this time, but simply to bring it out there and have the board members kind of look forward. So basically, that position for whoever the new superintendent would be, would be July 1st, 2026. President Lewis had asked me just to send out and ask for proposals from three search firms that are out there that are pretty well-known here in the state of Illinois. So we did get a proposal from IASB, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards. We also have a proposal from HYA, or Hazard, Young, Atiya, and Associates, and BWP, which is Bigger Web PNR and Associates. They're working on a proposal, but there's a little more personalized, and they asked for a little more time. So we should probably get that maybe sometime next week. So at this point, that is all that has been done. Like I said, I wanted to open up to the board to start thinking about this, and start thinking about process-wise, what would we be looking to do. I did speak with Brian Harris from the IASB, who's sort of a superintendent mentor, and actually works for Hazard, Young, and Atiya, and he feels that we're, you know, ahead of the game, so to speak, as far as this process starting, you know, certainly this summer, there would, there would be some commitments as far as depending on if we go with a search firm, which search firm we would go to, how do we go about that? And then, obviously, there's a whole process that you go through. There would also include the fall, as far as interviews and things like that, with the eventual looking to name the superintendent, the new superintendent, probably sometime in December, sorry, December or January. And then there's that interim time where they try to get to know the district, even though most likely they're employed somewhere else. But President Lewis asked me to put this out, just to see what thoughts were out there, and see where people would like to go.
This is a significant decision in the life of this school and district. I think that while some of the major search firms are listed there, that all board members should have an opportunity to bring search firm names forward.
Absolutely. And if you have any tonight, or want to email them to me, we could certainly get proposals from them. There are more search firms out there, as you've alluded to. There's even some national search firms that their headquarters isn't in Illinois, but like in Iowa, for example, so, yes.
For most of the firms, each of the ones there, some of them are nationals, but even those that are local, like IASB or some of the others, they do have an arm or means where their search goes national, even for the superintendent. So there's a local side that they're obviously specialized in, but they do work with partners that takes it to a national level. So all three of those provide that.
I just want to be sure that, I just want to be sure that all board members have an opportunity to have a voice in identifying.
These proposals, at least the ones we have, they're available, and with the superintendent, you guys can stop in or whatever to take a look through those.
In addition to the search firms, would we be able to create hiring committees?
So usually, let's say we go with one of these search firms, usually what they'll do is they'll, they'll meet with the board to try to get a feel for, who do you want to hear from? So like, community outreach, surveys, focus groups like within the school, and then there's more of a dialogue on what do you, what does the Fenton Board want the process to look like? So there'll certainly be a time to kind of go through that and see, to make sure that it's a thorough search, where we're gathering input from all stakeholders, and develop what the process is going to look like.
For the past two months, I've been trying to update myself on this process, long before I spoke to Sam about it. Each of them have different schedules, steps, or processes, and getting to know, but once we can narrow down which we're going with, is it, we can definitely have them come in and make a proposal, or go through their outline, but in their proposals, there's an outline of steps that they would take us through. Like, one of the things I thought was important was having workshops with teachers, community leaders, and parents, and have their input. No, they're not part of the decision-making process, but you want their input. And what I thought was important to make time to, prior to, to incorporate that into their schedule, into the process, to get that input. And so, as you, if you, once you get a chance to take a look through the two that we already have, you can see the similarities between the two, but it is a task to get up to date.
More to follow, I mean, so, again, to reiterate, Dr. McCullough here, if you have any other search firms you'd like to see a proposal from, reach out to me, I will facilitate that and collect them, and then eventually, as time goes on, we'll probably get to the point, you know, do we want representatives from the board to review these proposals? Do we want to hear from certain search firms? That's one thing we've done in the past, is maybe have a few representatives listen, and then bring a recommendation to the board. But obviously, we want to collect more information from people and what they think, to start thinking in those terms.
And just in addition to that, going back to the process we went through with selecting the independent review, we selected two board members, they read the proposals, and then there was, we had one day where every, all of the firms came in, and we listened to their in-person proposals, made a recommendation to the board from there to move forward on. Whoever those people are, they, you know, there's some, you know, it's tedious going through the package, but it's necessary to the process, to understand it and to separate the firms from each other.
So that's a possible approach we could take, you know, depending on what the board members think. But if you have other thoughts on this subject, just feel free to reach out, and we can incorporate that in our next steps. Jose?
Yeah, both of these FOIA's have been resolved, Dr. Benson.
Okay, thank you. There's no other? Okay, so we have, we have discussion, action, just a preview, we did go over some of these in finance facility. Obviously, we have, we have three new board members tonight that maybe aren't completely up to speed on everything. So hopefully, we can try to answer questions that you have. If you'd like, during the discussion phase of this, we can kind of give an overview of what we went over to help you make an informed vote. So just whatever you need, that's fine. We'll start out with a STEM Wing Computer Science class for computer purchase.
May I have a motion and a second to the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2025 purchase of 60 Lenovo Think Center M70Q Gen 5 small form factor desktop computers and 60 BNQ 20-inch LED computer monitors from CDWG for the amount of $57,307.20.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Brittany, do you just mind going on there in case there's any questions?
Do you want me to go ahead and just do a brief?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, yeah.
So currently, our Computer Science and Engineering courses, their curriculum is supported by the use of Windows desktops. We are requesting board approval for the purchase of 60 total desktops and monitors for the new STEM Wing. The first floor has two classrooms that have a divisible wall, those will be the ones that will house our Computer Science and Engineering courses. They use a lot of industry-standard software, like Autodesk for engineering, variety of graphic design, 3D modeling, and coding software that requires a lot of resources. Chromebooks are fantastic for daily student academic use, but these require a lot of hardware and software flexibility that Chromebooks can't support. What we're requesting, the setup is very similar to what we're currently using in our Computer Science and Engineering class, along with our Graphic Design class and the Applied Tech space, so this will be very similar to what they're currently using, and will continue to use for the next full year.
So would that be 30 computers per classroom, or 15?
30 computers in each classroom, 30 computers, 30 monitors.
Those classrooms split in two, or is that already split?
Split in two, and there's an opportunity for them to bring down the wall for collaborative work.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Upstein.
Rozinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
And then Lewis?
Yes, motion passed.
Okay, so I will take this one briefly, so the board is aware, annually, we appoint one of our administrators to the DALES Board, more commonly known as TCD, and Michelle Papenichalow is our Director of Post-Secondary Pathways and Career Tech and Education, and does an excellent job with those programs, has expertise in that area. So we're going to recommend that Michelle serves on the DALES Board for next year. She's currently serving on that board. I'll make the motion.
I gotta read it first.
Oh, sorry.
I was just waiting for any other questions. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approves the resolution to appoint Michelle Papenichalow, Director of Post-Secondary Pathways and Career Tech Education, as Fenton's Representative for DuPage Area Occupational Education Systems, as presented.
I'll make the motion now.
Second.
Since we just did the discussion, roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Upstein.
Rozinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. Our next item is Gilbain Bid Fencing and Lighting Proposal. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education, based on the bids received for bid release two, recommend awarding a contract to the firms for Fenton High School stadium entrance, site lighting, and fencing work. Furthermore, we recommend the Gilbain Change Order Number Two dated April 21st, 2025, for a combined construction value of $670,675.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion.
And that'll be Bruce if anyone has any questions.
So this image that we're looking at right here, this is closest to 83, correct? With the greenery?
So that, that is, that's, like, if you're going around the auditorium, so right now that's kind of under, under construct, so we're going to redo that walkway, so there's some lighting for aesthetics and safety reasons. So like, let's say it was a football game, then, so we're going to redo that, that whole area. The decorative gate is also an entry point where now both sides will enter at the same location with a, with a new ticket booth, so again, for aesthetic reasons.
And they'd all be entering from what is currently the visitor's side?
You got it, yes.
Yeah.
Very good.
Did I hear that they were going to put it against the tracks as well?
You did. So that's part of the fencing component, so there's some additional fencing, but also, actually, for years, we've been having ongoing dialogue on safety issues with kids crossing the tracks, and there's no fencing there. So as a continuation of that, we did secure a grant through the state, which basically 90% to 95% of the fencing will be paid for through this grant. And we just had the bid come in, it's about $100,000, so it'd be very little cost to us, and ideally, we're going to fence off the area on our side of the tracks, so that kids aren't crossing over the tracks. So you're right, thanks, thanks for bringing that up. That's part of the fencing in this bid that we would like to approve, and then that will...
To the cost of baseballs and softball, I'm going to go with, well, they could be...
We will have gates, yeah. We don't want the kids going to get the ball and put it over the tracks, there will be some gates, but you're right, that may be an issue in the short term, yeah. Bruce has more of the financial pleasure, if anyone has any regarding this. A real, a simpler way, this is like outdoors, finishing the work between the STEM Wing and the stadium, that still needs to be done.
And it's all covered under the initial...
Yes.
...bond we went out for, this is all covered in those expenses, so there's no additional funds needed.
Correct.
And if you hadn't heard, at the FNF meeting, Finance Facility, we're still under budget and on time.
Yeah.
So, it's planned expenditure is coming in, in little trickles.
Okay. Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
McCullough?
Epstein.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed.
Okay, so what we do when we form a new board is we sort of decide on regular board meeting dates. So sort of generically put, what we, when we meet is the fourth Wednesday of every month, except holidays require an earlier meeting. If that's the case, then we usually move up to the Wednesday before. For example, next year, when we look at Thanksgiving and Christmas time, that would be the fourth Wednesday. So then we would move up to the, the week before Wednesday. That's basically how we do it. We, we want to vote first on it and then what we can do after that is create, create the dates in a chart for everyone so you know, you can plan out your year basically, when the board meetings are. But we meet once a month and it's typically the fourth Wednesday. If for some reason, there's some other circumstances that we would need to change a board meeting, we'd obviously come to the board in advance, explain why, perhaps a budgeting timeline or something. But for the most part, this should keep us covered.
May I have a motion and a second? That the Board of Education approved holding regular meetings on the fourth Wednesday of each month unless the dates conflict with the holiday. In the case of that conflict, the regular meeting would be one week earlier.
Come on, somebody else. I make the motion. I make the motion.
First. Second. Need a second.
Second. Roll call?
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed.
Okay, Bruce, you ready? Ready to go over there? No, you haven't done much.
If you're ready for me, I'm ready.
This is it. This is a discussion only, so no action, just for informational purposes.
This is a health insurance discussion?
Yeah, yeah, just for the board's information.
So just some background information aside from the slide up there, but just for everyone's benefit, we belong to the EBC, which is the Educational Benefit Cooperative, which provides health insurance, medical insurance, dental, life insurance that we partake in. We have three medical plans, a PPO and two different HMO plans and a dental plan, and they're all offered through the EBC Cooperative, which consists of about 122 districts currently and kind of growing. We've been a member since 2009, so a pretty good length of time. But really, the purpose of joining a cooperative, we're a smaller district, is really to provide economies of scale and risk pooling that will allow members greater long-term to financial stability than purchasing insurance products on our own. The PPO and dental plans are self-funded, the HMO is funded on a cost-plus funding arrangement. Even though we're part of a cooperative, that doesn't, we still are allowed to develop our own plan and, and every district does, including us. So if we want to have different deductibles or changes in co-pays, that is all up to the individual district. So we have that flexibility as a member of this cooperative. There's a couple of components that go into determining your rates, what those will be. It's referred to as the banding formula and has to do with your paid claim ratio and then your rate increase, which is based on projections for the following year. But in essence, I guess in the short version of it, it's, it's based on your claims experience and driving medical insurance costs. I'm pleased to say, so on this slide up here, that's the, the banding formula averages are listed there under PPO. It says 6.9%. Trend is 8%, that's projected, so we're under trend. The average loss ratio for the EBC was 104%, so we'd like to see it no greater than 100%, but it's slightly more than that. The HMO is 5.2% with a trend of 7% and the dental is 4% and trend is 4%. And our life insurance that's offered through it as well, that'll be no change with that and that's good for another three years locked into the current rates that we're paying today. As far as the increases for next year, we did fall below. The next slide, if we could go ahead, for the PPO, this is the banding formula. I know there's a lot of numbers on there, but the middle of the formula of the range is that 6.9%, 38 districts fell within that. I'm pleased to report that we are at 3.9%. We are one of four districts that had a paid claim loss ratio in the 80.7 to 87.1%. So that came to a 3.9% increase.
Could you talk more, explain more about that paid claim to loss ratio?
Sure. Paid claims is determined by dividing the revenue submitted to EBC by the claims paid by the EBC during the experience period. And then the resulting percentage is the paid claim loss ratio. The paid claims are also a total of all individual claims under $75,000 plus the per capita share of all the EBC catastrophic claims between $75,000 and $1 million for the PPO. And then paid claims for the HMO are $75,000 and then up to $350,000 on the HMO side of it. And that combined with the rate increases developed by projecting the claims in an experience period to the end of the projection period and adding administrative and reinsurance costs for total projected cost. So I know I said a lot there. The, the, the good news is, being a member of the pool, our rate would not change, increase greater than 5% or wouldn't fall below 5%. So we are insulated somewhat to, to have, see some kind of a, an outrageous, you know, double-digit claim. We would be protected from that aspect. So the PPO increase for next year is 3.9%. The HMO would be 5.2, so we fell right in the middle of the banding formula there. On the next slide, we're one of 26 districts that fell in, into that. And then we're in the middle again with the dental claim, 60 school districts have, they have 4% claim. And as I mentioned, the life insurance is, there's no change there. So that would be, become effective July 1st. We have an open enrollment every year for our staff, which would, actually is going to start next week. And that would run forward through the end of, or near the end of May, the open enrollment period. And then again, that would start July 1st. And our plan year runs concurrent with our fiscal year, so July 1st to June 30th is our, how our insurance year runs. Our current participation, we have 95 individuals in our PPO plan, 73 in our HMO plan and 170 in our dental plan. And then of course, we offer single and family coverage as well in the various plans that we offer. So that's kind of it in an overview. And I just threw in some extra slides. This, the renewal meeting, actually Jose went to that earlier this, late last month. And this is just kind of some slides that I thought were interesting to share with you to conclude in the board packet, but the, I won't go through all of them. I know it was probably a little bit too much information, maybe hard to read there too. But the top 20 conditions of, you know, the 72% of stop-loss claims came from the top 10 conditions. Cardiovascular is at number, the number two, report for the highest spot. The highest cost injectable drugs are listed there. That's a major driving force right now. And then the claims of $1.5 million plus claims rose 8% on claims per million covered under the basic, over the past year and the last four years. So that is kind of it. I know I went through that in a, in a rush. We're committed to them for a year. I think if we were to make a change, you have to give a year's notice. But we are committed to them starting July 1st. And again, the new rates, all that information will be shared with staff next week, but we just wanted to bring the board up to speed on what we're looking at for next year in terms of what we will budget and what staff would be encountering starting July 1st.
Does anyone have any committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President. Bensonville Community Foundation met on March 27th. We had a very light agenda. We closed out a couple of claims. We're looking for additional information. One mini grant came in that I voted on. I believe that passed. I'll know for sure at our next meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 15th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. That's at the Bensonville Library.
Okay.
And I'm going to assume that the administration will make notification that a foundation that changes to membership and share Mike's address, please.
Great point. Karen, make a note of that, please.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it. Just want to make sure so he starts getting emails. Thank you very much. That's all I have to report.
We had a finance and facilities meeting earlier, six, as you guys have just voted on some of the things we discussed was the STEM Wing Computer Science Classroom, computer purchases. There was an update on the Abastus contract proposals for the STEM Wing that we'll be voting on next month. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then also the Gilbain fencing and lighting proposal. We also did a walkthrough of the new STEM Wing.
Which by the way, if any of the new board members are interested, I know you're going to be making appointments to come in to get your laptops and various things, feel free, if you have time, we could take a stroll through the STEM Wing with, well, I shouldn't say stroll, with hopefully shoes and, and we have hard hats available, so. Let's skip down to...
I would suggest if it's during the day and you're walking through, try not to wear open-toe shoes, at the very least.
Right. Jose would appreciate that from a liability standpoint. Yeah. Let's move on down to NetSec. The last NetSec meeting I attended, I'm on the NetSec Board and Leo is actually on the governing board. There's also an operating board that I'm on. And they're, they went through their preschool program, so that was interesting, although not exactly relevant to Fenton, but that was sort of the educational theme at the last meeting. So what will get you right you up to speed on that's those, that schedule and what your wall is? There's no Len meeting to report.
Just like to know Karen will send the committees their schedules via email. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, May 28th, 2025 at 7:00 PM with a tentative finance and facility and also policy committee meeting at 6:00 PM prior to the regular board Closed session. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the following? Hey, 5 Illinois CS 120 slash 2C 11. Litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular's public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. I'd like to note, there would be no action taken after closed session.
And also just for the new members, we typically, we cut through that area right over there and meet in a room down that way for, for closed session. So we'll, and then we'll return back to this room for open session. Yeah, so take the sacred things with you. So take the safety things with you.
And a second to go back into open session.
Motion.
Second.
No, they got it. The looters got it. I've done enough tonight.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Rzansky?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Back in open session. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.